Hello. Welcome. All those smiling faces out there. Happy April Fool's Day. No tomfoolery today from any of you. Cheers.
The state love.
Just state love. All right, we are happy to have Joe Evil. Oh, wait, before we do that, we're going to welcome our United Way Chief Executive Officer Melissa Dever. Melissa, welcome.
Mr. President, if I might.
Please.
Yeah, so as a pretty recent member to the United Way Board, I got to participate in the process that we've recently gone through to bring in a new Director of the United Way.
Yeah.
It was a really large pool of candidates. And then a fair number of those candidates got interviews. A smaller number got second interviews and an even smaller number got final interviews. So a multiple interview process with a tremendous number of candidates. And I'm thrilled that Dever was the successful candidate in that very competitive process. And we're excited to have her here today and thought maybe give you an opportunity to say a few words if you want. For the folks that are joining us online, if you'll keep your voice up good and high, that would be helpful.
Well, my family would say that I have a loud mouth. Yeah, so I am, I've been a social worker for years and years and years, longer than I would like to admit. Because I'm still 20 in my mind. But yeah, so I have led nonprofits, Alzheimer's Association, the Area Agency on Aging. I worked at hospitals back in the day, so have lots of experience from lots of different areas. And I love doing nonprofit work. I love bridging gaps where I see a need in the communities. So that's something I really want to work hard on doing and getting our fundraising where it needs to be so that we can provide as much help to as many people. Because there are so many people out there that need help. And I want us to be able to do that. So I'll be knocking on your doors, coming to visit you, trying to get you involved in any way possible. So if you hear me knocking, it's just me coming to learn more about you and what you do and what you think we could do to help folks and how we could even get you more involved with United Way. But very passionate about nonprofit work and helping those in need in the community. So I'm very excited to be able to do that. Thank you.
And if my colleagues have questions that they would like to ask, I should be happy to answer them.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
In the work at United Way Dubs, you know, it's just off the chart. I'm also very passionate about Valley Pardon's Imagining Library. So that's one of the special passions I have.
Awesome.
Hopefully, we can move that to the proportion of your responsibility because it it has such a great impact upon young people.
Yes. Totally agree.
Well, thank you. And we could talk further about that.
Hey, that would be great.
Sure.
So, welcome. And you know, the United Way is a really incredibly important hub for our community. You have a tremendous responsibility. And all three of us will, all of us, all of us will, you know, do everything we can to help you see success there.
Thank you.
Happy to have you on board. Thank you for your willingness to serve and look forward to helping you.
Awesome. I can't wait.
Thanks for being here today.
And also, just on a programming note, this meeting will probably go longer than we all want it to, an hour or so. And so I'm sure that you and Garrett might have things, other things you want to do in your, so don't feel obligated to, to stay all that long. Stay as long as you want. I just want you to have a free call pass.
Thank you.
Is that Garrett Bear back there?
What's up, dude?
All right.
And please have a cookie.
Okay.
We got a lot going good. Now we have Joe Evil from our Health Department.
Good morning.
Those who know, thank you for being here.
Okay. As Commissioner said, I'm Joe Evil, the health commissioner at the Health Department. Just kind of giving you an update with 2024 and talking about 2025 a little bit. This is actually, being April, this is my four-year anniversary here. I'm flown by. The 2024 annual report, you can check it over here. Pick one up, go get one, it'll go on our website. Talking about Health Department, gonna start with our vision. It's basically to have a fair facility where residents live in healthy and safe communities in their power to make informed decisions about their health, allow them to achieve their maximum health potential. Some of the things from 2024, WIC caseload, Women's and Children's Supplemental Nutrition Program. WIC is 1,850 participants. The state assessment every year tells you how many they're expecting to have for each county. In our county, that was only 1,285. So we're well over what the state assumes we would be. And we see a lot of growth in that program, especially as the extra COVID benefits from staff were in the way. People had to come back into WIC to try to make up for that. And we're seeing a lot of growth in our WIC clinic in the area. Well, Suits Permit, which is kind of an indicator of how growth and development's going on, stayed about the same from last year to 23. We had some peaks. Again, maybe pent-up demand from COVID as well as some of the dollars that were available for a couple of years there. And no real change over last year. We were able to pass out $210,000 in grant awards for sewage system replacements here to qualifying individuals in the county. We get about $150,000 from the OEPA to help with that. And then we were able to get $70,000 to the county commissioners for the Healthy Aging Grant specifically for older individuals last year. That was a great help as well. We're really trying to push out community involvement in our education and prevention with our health educators. So we're out at a lot of events. And certainly if there are events that we're not there, you know, call our office and let us know. And we'll see if we can get our staff out there, set up a table, and talk about the public health programs that are available in the county, in the community. And last year, we were able to start up a community garden out of the the Lancaster Fairgrounds. It's accessible to the public. You know, if we can build on that in the future. Can't do much of anything if we don't have funding. So that's kind of one of my most important parts of my job. And we try to diversify where those are. So we're not, we don't have all our eggs in one basket. Although if we had a basket full of eggs, that would probably be a good investment. Our biggest pool of funding last year was from grants, almost 1.9 million. Forty-one percent of our total revenue was from grants. And almost all of those grants are really federal grants. We might get them from the Ohio Department of Health or some other state agency, but they get the money from the feds for the most part. But we do try to look for local funds, nonprofit foundations, and anywhere we can find things to support our programs. Fees and licenses and permit are usually in our Environmental Health Division. So you're looking at restaurants, sewage systems, wells, swimming pools, plumbing, and all those things where you get that permit. And then the Townships and Villages provide funding from inside tax village. That was 587,000 last year. And then the city of Lancaster funds us through a contract as well. And then we have charges for services. So things like getting a birth certificate or just getting a water sample on the well. Or if we do an immunization, you can build an insurance company. And then from state, they attribute a whopping $78,000 in our budget. So Ohio's known for not funding public health very well internally. And then miscellaneous of that hundred and three thousand, about a hundred of that was money that we were able to realize because we switched from our health insurance plan over onto the county's plan and saw significant savings. That helped out quite a bit. Those grants that we're talking about, I already mentioned WIC. You had the enhanced operation grant, which is supposed to end at the end of this year, but unfortunately last Monday evening, they told us, hey, today was the last day. So like a lot of people, we had staff, you know, we have staff that are paid for that. We have contractors that you know, we had contracts that are trying to figure out, okay, now what do we do when they just pull the rug out from underneath it? So we're, we're still trying to figure that out. This is across the country where that public health funding was pulled out. Water pollution control loan fund, that's sewage replacement money. You know, birth preparedness and workforce development funding. And then things like air tobacco prevention, drug overdose prevention. We have trips for kids and safe sleep. You know, every year it seems like we have infants that die from unsafe sleep practices, either, you know, in a bed or on a couch or something and end up suffocating. So we have a pack in place that we can pass out to households that don't have a safe crib or somewhere for the child to sleep. And then Healthy Eating Act at WIC. Our Get Vaccinated program is just to try to vote vaccine, work with the schools and healthcare providers to, you know, make sure kids are kept up to date. And that's really taken a highlight with the measles outbreak down in Texas. And now coming into Ohio, we're starting to see cases, you know, from Ashtricville County. Really coming through, I think the Amish population who has historically a low vaccination rate. But this is extremely communicable and extremely preventable because the vaccine, you know, works, this is our most effective vaccine we have. So it is important to have that. Just once we do get an outbreak, you don't want it to be, you know, all of a sudden you got 400 cases or 500 cases like they have in Texas right now. We have mosquito spraying, mostly for the townships or for the villages in the county. We have funding to help monitor for mosquito-borne diseases. And then our medical reserve corps, which is like a, like a reserve, so we can activate and call up if we need to set up a mass clinic or something. We have these people that are enrolled that we can activate. The Safe Communities, which is a traffic safety program, as well as a lot of other kind of one-time funding programs that we do. Our offices, as you might know, are located out in Sheridan Drive, which is now called Sheridan Center. Since fortunately, the county commissioner has purchased that property last year and even today they're replacing the roofing. So I'm glad to be here where it's nice and quiet. But we certainly appreciate that and all the work that they're putting in there, investing into that property to make that space for us and other county agencies. And then Pickerington, we have an office up on Tussing Road that we have WIC there early two days a week. And this month, it's going to three days a week because that demand has increased in that area. And we also do immunization things up there once a month. And then for 2025, we hired a community health worker, which is the first time we've ever had one in this county that I'm aware of. And they can do case management, referral kind of things. Really working, especially with pregnant, low-income mothers, families. That they can work everything from a senior citizen, you know, to a newborn. And help them find, you know, healthcare providers, transportation, education, housing, all kinds of resources that she's able to help coordinate. We received a grant to provide so many lessons for children this year. Hundreds of children in the community in partnership with the YMCA. So you can contact our office or the Y to get information on that. Integrated Harm Reduction, which is our overdose reduction program, is a grant that we just received. And it's kind of the next level up from our project on that we have been doing, which distributed screen a lot so. And then just this week, we got to receive the National Environmental Health Association and USDA FDA grant to enhance our food inspection programs. So we're excited about that. And we're currently replacing it, or putting in a new generator out of that building with creative funds so that we can continue operations when the power's out, out there. But I think those are the main, you know, things of interest going on. So if you have any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioner Davis?
Joe, I appreciate the work you're doing and appreciate the update. Thank you.
State love.
Yeah, so the four years you've been here, you know, I think the Health Department is much improved. You know, with the past, they're seeing some of their programs where those who have needs, their benefits being stolen. Have you seen any of that with the WIC program?
I don't think we see much of that in WIC. But our, our program's a little different. Like the benefits, they have to come into the office and load the benefits on the card. So it's kind of more, a little more old school. Which means more work, you know, getting your ride, you come into the office, just load their card in. And so it's maybe a little less prone to that way. And which you can use the card for is very restricted. It's specific foods and there's only a you know, it's only valid at like grocery stores, not convenience stores or those kinds of places so much.
Thank you.
So we had our district advisory council meeting last night, which is the oversight board that is the Board of Health. And I think we had seven of, maybe eight of 28 different people that could have been there. We got our business done. And, you know, we were kind of looking at why we had such a slow turnout. And I made the comment then, I'll repeat it today, that when things are going well, people don't come out and yell at you, right? There is a district advisory council meeting we had in this room, I think, you know, just before Joe came on. That was packed. Almost every township and almost every village had someone here and they were not happy. And we've made changes at the Health Department and Joe has done fantastic job. He's built a really good team out there. And as a result, things are moving, continue to move in a great direction. And none of our townships or villages have anything to really bitch about. So thank you, Joe, for all that you're doing.
Well, thanks to obviously our Board of Health, who is responsible for a lot of that, you know, regarding need to make changes. And then the county commissioners have just been, you know, really supportive since I've been here. So I appreciate that.
Thanks for being here today. All right, now we're on to public comments. If you'd like to address the commission, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes as we do have a lot going on today. So we're gonna start with Ray.
Good morning. Last week, I didn't come because I was not at the car. At least I didn't feel I was. So I stayed home. And my home, of course, is out in Primrose. A lot of activities are coming on into the picture now. We're in the spring of the year. And a lot of things are happening around this county and in the city of Lancaster and Pickerington and the communities. I've noticed this activity is increasing in a lot of areas. So at this time, with the we have, I'm going to go to prayer. And Lord, we come before you this morning thanking you for the people that are here. And we pray, Lord, that the leaders of our county will use their time and the monies that these organizations have to promote the community itself. And the most important, the family. I believe the families in this county are growing in their faith and their efforts to raise kids in a family group. And I pray that they might turn to you, Lord, and use this time for your glory. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Ray. Who would be next? All right. Well, thank you all very much for coming today. We appreciate it. Legal update. We have Amy Brown Thompson with us today.
Briefly, I just wanted to remind everybody, come April 9, there will be a new statute enacted that will mark the contracts. We know that county administration has already put out an email. Our office developed a form for folks to use when they upload CRMS to kind of acknowledge these law changes to our vendors. Thanks to Stephen Durnell for preparing that. I think we're still going to work out some kinks with it, just kind of getting some feedback on it, but I want to remind you that will go into effect in a while.
And that's why we have you on the agenda every week. Do you want to comment on that?
I appreciate the work that they've done to get that up and running, as well as Rochelle. We'll probably have a few kinks if people are maybe not understanding or being fully aware of that process. So we'll work through those. But in the end, it is great that we have that ability now and hopefully will lessen the time that you and your team have had to use going back and forth with different vendors.
And to be clear, that's not going to eliminate our review. We're still going to be reading every contract, but it should make it for a lot of things. Now we don't need to fight about it. Like it's just not enforceable. So that makes life easier. So.
Cool. There be any issue implementing that before the night?
I mean.
I mean, it's nice to send out to vendors so they're at least aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no issue if you want to say, hey, come in, this is the new law that'll go into effect. I mean, a lot of these objections have been made off an AG opinion. I mean, it's not changing our review, other than it's going to be quicker.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for being here. County Administration update. Honey?
All right. April 1. Today is the beginning of National County Government Month. That's a great opportunity to highlight the role that counties play in serving our residents in all Ohioans. Throughout April, we will be highlighting some of the essential services that county government provides. And a shout out to Bennett in advance of that. Ohio Public Works Programs. On May 6, voters will have the opportunity to vote on the renewal of the Ohio Public Works Program. This program funds essential infrastructure programs in Ohio communities. This past December, the Ohio Senate started the process to continue a program that has been previously renewed three times by adopting House Joint Resolution 8. Nearly 19,000 projects have been funded in every one of Ohio's 88 counties. Fairfield County specifically, the program has funded bridge replacements, street culvert and drainage improvements, waterline replacements, and much more. The County Commissioners Association of Ohio is working with all counties to make sure to get the message out about how important it is for the passage of this. And so therefore, for your consideration, next week will be a resolution for the three of you to, to pass in promoting the importance of this particular issue that will become before the voters in Ohio. Anything you want to add on that? Anything, Jeremiah?
Yeah. OPWC, Ohio Public Works, it's a great program. We typically give between $4,000 and $5,000 every year for roadway and bridge work. It's the, it's the easiest money for us to get a hold of and spend. And I mean that in a totally positive way, meaning that we can go get that money, get jobs done a lot faster than we can federal grant money and things like that. It's a lifeline. Of course, it's really important. The point everybody realizes is that it's not an increase in anything. It's just a renew. But I can't say enough about it.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Highlights, resolutions. The review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals. And for today's voting agenda, there are 27 resolutions. Seventeen financial resolutions, eight of which are to appropriate unappropriated funds. The other 10 are for second quarter allocations, account of camp transfers, memo receipts, and for the approval of the payment of bills. Engineer's Office has two resolutions for the Pickerington Road Bridge Replacement Project. One approves the contract of the CHNT Bridge Company for the replacement of the bridge. And the other approves the notice to commence. Engineer's Office also has a resolution to approve changing load ratings for bridges. Anything you want to add to that, Jeremiah?
Just ongoing work. The load rating thing is something that has been an ever-changing, evolving item. Seems like every year we're getting new requirements from federal highway, looking at different truck configurations and so on and so forth. So that's why that keeps popping up.
Thank you. And Facilities has a resolution to approve the bid award to Gutneck Construction for the medical lab space at the Workforce Center. John, Rick? Oh, hi, Ryan.
This would be that, that next phase of our project at Workforce Center, which includes Rick's offices. And a lab space that includes good bids, underbid, under our project estimate. And a partner we're working with. So really the same team as Phase 1. Nice to see you. Construction should start next week.
What's the, what's the timeline for this?
September, October, final completion.
Which originally was November.
I know. That's, there you go.
Happy and thanks to John Stein. I was, I was out, but lots of kudos for Facilities helping move us to our temporary space out there. They said they just filed and said, work that much in two days. So thank you very much for that.
Not saying they don't normally work that much.
He's gonna take back the high five. All right, moving on. JFS has six resolutions for the approvals of service agreements and for network placements. Or anything? Are these winding down now?
I don't guarantee anything. But it's definitely less than last year.
Bart, budget review.
Yeah, as we discussed in the roundtable, the 2026 budget season opens today. So system's open as we speak. There's no surprises in the parameters so far this year. We're going to use, still use a 5% increase for health insurance. If you have any questions there, let us know. HR is analyzing that with groups of people that we work with on the health insurance. And as we know more, we'll keep everybody updated. The budget guidance package, I will send that out today, like you normally receive. You'll see that. For elected officials and departmental heads, you all should have received an email about setting up a budget review meeting. So please use that link to set up a meeting. Get selected time and day that fits your schedules. If you have any questions about that, let us know. We can help. Within those meetings, I'm going to be also providing a departmental financial report. It's the report that you usually see during the budget, at the end of the budget season. That shows, you know, whether or not the budget is in parameters or not. First, it's going after him. I'm starting that at the beginning. And I'll explain that when we keep those meetings. Discuss that with you at that time. That's all I have for now.
All right. Well, thank you to you and Stacy for, for that process. I know it's a little labor-intensive, but I think it's a good process to, you know, start earlier than the year and work, work through that, those items with the individual department. So thank you for that. All right, Rochelle.
Thank you. The Regional Planning Commission meeting is today at 6:00 PM at the Fairfield County Records Center. The Lancaster Eagle社 published an article titled Fairfield County Commissioner Davis Levesey Wants to Start a Local Veterans Hall of Fame on March 26. Well, they published it on March 26. The following correspondence was received. A letter from the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney regarding 2026 appropriations for compensation of elected officials and correspondence regarding industrial solar projects. That's all I have.
Thank you. That's all, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you. Updates to elected officials and department heads. Brandon, we'll start with you. All right, Mr. Johnson.
We're in the process of changing companies that we use for tax claims. We're going from taxes to NAR. Taxes over the years have, we've had some issues with them. I know the Recorder's Office has had issues with them. So I'm believing the switch to NAR will be beneficial for everyone. Also, we're looking at possibly changing the firm that we use for online payments for taxes. Looking at that also with value might be in the firm. That's it.
Jeremiah?
Well, we're finishing up most of our winter stuff. We got trash pickup completed here about a week ago. A lot of my guys don't like doing it, but it, it really makes a big difference out there. Not only aesthetically, but we get a lot of bottles, things like that. It can cause problems with motor tires and all kinds of fun stuff out of the way. We're lining up all of our culvert work right now, our mid-sized culverts, which are typically 12, 36 inches. And then the other ones get scheduled. And then the other ones get scheduled. So it's kind of that springtime, getting everything switched over from concentrating on stone ice to getting some stuff in the ground and building things.
Cool.
Inspections. That's a fun time of the year for me, so I got to bring out a, I like inspecting.
Anything else, Jeremiah? Dr. Brown?
We continue to explore artificial intelligence and do that process. We have a phrase that we're using that there is no AI without PI. And PI is the process intelligence. We're learning a lot about our processes, particularly like the lot split application. It's one that has been very successful in improving the services for the public. We're really just digging into each process, turning over every stone to try to look at new ways of doing things. It's been successful. I'm also very excited to report that the Popular Annual Financial Report was awarded in recognition of achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States in Canada. We issued a press release about that. That might be in your folder for review. The PAFR, the Popular Annual Financial Report, is one of my most favorite projects. The reason that that is one of my most favorite is because it's not something that we have to do. It's not a requirement. There's no compliance for it. But it is one of those reports that an everyday reader appreciates. And we really have changed the way that we are preparing that particular report. And I volunteer on the peer review committees to learn about how those are assessed. And we've learned a lot about improvements for the Popular Annual Financial Report. So excited about that. We also have issued the fact sheets for the property tax levies that folks will see on the ballot in May. We'll issue a news release about that probably on April 8th, when the early voting begins. You can right now go into the website and you can see specifically how a levy affects a particular parcel. So you get information in the aggregate from the fact sheets, but you can see individual information just by going on the website. And I also brought the map of the month, which is, thanks request from the County Park District to show all of the historic trails as well as new trails. And with the weather being nicer, people like to get out and about a bit. And some people have even said they plan their summer vacations around these trails. So we have these maps that are available. On Friday, I'll be teaching at a high university and volunteer teaching a leadership summit conference review. And this engages about 360 people in the community, and I'm very excited about it.
Congratulations on the award.
Thank you. To the whole team. It's been a very good team effort. Again, a very new process for preparing that. And hopefully it is a useful tool for transparency.
Great. Just a couple of things. First off, our partners, our partners, where we're looking at helping nonprofits with grants. We've had 30 registrants already for our Graire Writing Workshop for nonprofits. I was thinking 10 or 15. We're already at 30, and that's just with our first. So thank you. This is another way we're helping the community. And I want to take advantage of Jenny Sturgeon being here as our United Way representative. This was an email I received from somebody regarding one of her four students who just said, "I just love Jenny. She's what makes the Workforce Center." Anybody walks into the Workforce Center, Jenny's the first smiling face that they see. With this move and everything, she's just been invaluable to us. And I can't thank her enough. Every, every month, we do a customer service. What's been good in customer service, our department head meetings that Ani runs. And Jenny's name is always brought up. So since she's here, I wanted to embarrass her in front of her and just thank her for everything she does.
Whenever I walk in there, Jenny says, "Did you bring any cookies?"
Do you today?
So it is cool that you know when you walk in that door, you're going to get a smile. I mean, that's rare. So thank you for that. Every time you walk in, you're there and you're smiling and you're happy to help. And that is very much appreciated.
You know what her nickname is?
What's that?
The Door Lady.
We can do better than that.
The first year, the second year we did this, one student asked her to prom.
Okay, all right. That's a cool story.
Who doesn't love Jenny?
Yeah, I don't know how you're going to top that jump.
On the subject of Jenny, she will be summering in her cabin, which is, we have, we had to relocate the MA main entrance for workforce more to the middle of the building. So she will still be the first face you see in a temporary facility, built on the warehouse floor. But just so you know, as you go into workforce, that, that, that new main entrance is in the middle of the building. It's not the traditional entrance. And then for EMA, you know, just the next couple of days are going to be a lot, a lot of rain, which people should definitely be aware this amount of precipitation in one week is usually indicative of flooding for us.
So I've heard up to six inches.
Correct.
Yeah, I hope so, but it's safe if I can.
It all gets to the lake. The process to getting to the lake is sometimes a little bit worrisome for us. So.
Hey, Dan, how are you going to top that?
With, uh, nothing. I have a great team that I work alongside and IT is plugging away.
Wow. It's because it's the next day.
Ouch.
Uh, next week is our Child Abuse Prevention Breakfast. And is at 8:00 AM on, at Life Church Venue.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Well, I just wanted to take this opportunity. I was thinking about a particular birthday today that is going to be on April 5th. So we all want to say happy birthday to our county administrator. And so who is going to lead us in happy birthday? That's a good voice. Dennis is the honor.
Dan?
One, two, and three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear mommy. Happy birthday to you. Display ready.
It's good.
All right. I'm not sure how we're going to top that one. Old business. That's how we're going to top that. Commissioner Davis, any old business?
As I mentioned at last week's meeting, that we were looking forward to a meeting that did occur on Thursday with Matt DiToronto, who is the manager of Transit Partnerships Division within the Uber company. The meeting was scheduled for a half hour. It became pretty clear towards the beginning of the meeting that his primary goal in having that meeting was basically to screen us from the standpoint of, you know, do we really care about transit? Are we really wanting to solve problems here? Or are we just taking up his time? And he did that in the most sophisticated, professional way that wasn't offensive, as it is in many other situations. So I, I think it was a real positive meeting. Some of his screening questions involved, for example, you know, he wanted to know what our goal was in transit. And I told him that our goal was, at some point in the future, we wanted to be able to say that anybody who needed a ride in our county would get one efficiently and at a reasonable price. And we do have that on the long-term horizon in terms of what we want to achieve in transit. But that's our goal, and, and that seemed to satisfy that layer of screen. Another level of screening that he wanted to discern, I guess, was whether Ani and myself and Aaron Kennedy were, but qualified to engage in these conversations. In other words, did we have the support of the full commission? And I indicated to them that each of the three of us have given each other a pretty wide berth in the, in our, our various areas of concentration. And that seemed to, to satisfy him in that regard. The go-forward approach there is there are a couple other communities in Ohio that they're currently working with. So we're going to, to get introduced to those folks operating on that. That's next level. The level after that is what I'm most excited about is a really high-end data analysis of where the needs are, because they're seeing that in pings every day from people who want trips or drivers who may be running around and waiting for trips, which there aren't many, as you know. And, and, and there's a real dichotomy in, in the county on this issue. If you're in the Pickerington Violet area, you're close enough to the metro market where the drivers and the demand are there. And you, you get a trip one way or another if you want one. And, and again, if you don't live south of Coon Path, you don't probably get it. But there are times when there is no way to get from point A to point B in the southern parts of the county. So anyway, we had a, a, a really positive introductory conversation. And I'm really looking forward to the additional information, the additional research, additional data analysis, and then to ultimately a process of customizing a proposal. The, the beauty of that particular company is they're just not set in stone, you know? They're moving with the new, the next, the new, the next. And customizing options for local transit agency is what this division does. And, and the more we learn about how they do it, the more we'll be in a better position to decide at some point in the future if we want to dramatically accelerate the timeframe within which we can achieve our goal.
Commissioner Levesey, old business.
Good work, Steve. So last week, Developmental Disabilities had their annual celebration of possibilities. And that, quite frankly, I think it was one of the best ever. I mean, it was like, hooky. And the John F. Carr Award, one of the recipients was Bob Petty. And it was really interesting because Bob Petty, he does all the filming and all the preparation and all of this. So he's got his fingers in it all, and he had no idea. So it was, it was so cool. And what, what a deserving individual Bob Petty was to receive that award.
All right. So I also attended the DD Celebration, and I think it was one of the best-run events that they've had in quite a long time. And, you know, it's always a little bit inspiring when people are recognized for their good works. And they get up and very humbly talk about how those good works have had a positive impact on their lives. And we saw a lot of that last week, and it was just a really cool night. I mentioned that I participated in the District Advisory Council meeting. And again, couldn't be happier with the direction that our Board of Health is, is going. And then last night, Joe and I had the opportunity to attend the Township Association meeting with Amy. I got you. Amy was the keynote speaker. And did a great job. And Joe followed her and did a great job. And then I got a couple of minutes. And really well-attended. The townships are engaged. And, you know, there's a lot of talk about trying to find firemen. There's a lot of talk about tar and chipping tar and, you know, all the road stuff they got to do and checking culverts. But there was also talk about the growth that's coming and what they're doing to get ready for that. And that's now part of the conversation, which I think is really cool. So that was a good night. For our new business, this is CCO week, so I've got three different committees that I serve on that will have meetings this week, all leading to our board meeting next Tuesday, which leads into the event at the State House. I think Brandon's always going to be, they're always there. Dave, I think you're always there. It's a congregation of elected officials and state elected officials, countywide elected officials from across the state, and then the state representatives and senators. And usually get some good interaction there, so looking forward to that. New business for you, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you.
For you, Commissioner Levesey. All right. We will proceed to our voting pattern. Y'all would rise if you're able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Rochelle, any announcements?
Just that on the 15th, the Commissioners' meeting will be held at Alley Park following Leadership Conference. And that meeting will start at 1:00 PM.
Is there a motion for the approval in minutes of the March 25th meeting? Discussion. No discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Minutes passed 3:0. From the Commissioners' Resolution 2025-4.1.a, a resolution authorizing a fund of fund transfer for Fairfield County Job and Family Services for the second quarter 2025 allocation.
Under Commissioners, I move Resolutions A, B, C, and D.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Clerk of Courts, Legal Division, Resolution 2025-4.1.e, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into major expenditure object category 1110, Clerk of Courts, Legal.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Court, Common Caves, Resolution 2025-4.1.g, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for adult probation fund 2365, County Probation.
Hold on.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2025-4.1.h, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, County Engineer, 2024 Motor Vehicle for Other Services.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move Resolutions H through N.
Second. Discussion. Jeremiah, any questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution 2025-4.1.o, a resolution accepting bids and authorizing the approval bid award for the Workforce Center Economic Development and Medical Lab Spaces.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2025-4.1.p, a resolution to approve a memo expense memo receipt for the cost of certificates paid to Fairfield County Health Departments as a memo expenditure for Fund 2072 Public Children's Services.
Under Fairfield County Jobs and Family Services, I move Resolutions P through B.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. For Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2025-4.1.w, a resolution authorizing the Second Amendment to the FY25 Grand Agreement with Ohio Department of Youth Services.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2025-4.1.x, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for Sheriff's Office Fund 2711, Continuous Professional Training.
Under Fairfield County Sheriff, I move Resolutions X and Y.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Utilities, Resolution 2025-4.1.z, a resolution to probate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for Utilities, Fund 5044 Sewer and Fund 5046 Water.
So move.
Second. Discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. Payment of Bills, Resolution 2025-4.1. Motion passes three zero. Payment of Bills, Resolution twenty-five dash four dot one dot AA. A resolution authorizing approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for April eighth at nine.
Any other business to come before the commission this morning?
I, I just wanted to thank County Administrator Porto and, and the staff that just kind of got the word out and made sure that there was a, a good representation of people here to meet the United Way Director. I'm excited about this coming year with United Way here. And I, I hope folks will join me in that excitement.
I just hope that Ani has a wonderful birthday on Saturday.
Thank you.
All right. For motion.
Second.
All those, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.